...that you've seen that we are consistently looking for is how do you equate it with a fairness of what's going on out in the other areas. So our board is going to hear late this year, early next year, updated policies for winery events, winery management, new applications and other things like that. And on any of this, and in addition to that, we're hearing later this year, whole slew of policy changes to vacation rental by owners and the policy that the county has on that. So I encourage you all to stay integrated with that and understand that our goal would always be to achieve parity on that.
My name is Brian Santa Mont. I've lived in Windsor for 25 years. I have, I want to address everyone here tonight. Mr. Huffman, thank you for your public service, but please remember that you're the people's representative to Washington, not the federal government's representative to the people. When you go back to Washington DC, please deliver this message from the people of Windsor. We don't need federal bureaucrats dictating land use policy here in Sonoma County. And since you say that your motivation is due to President Obama wanting to take land into trust for us, can you say something to him? Can you say, "Thanks Obama." Mr. Gore, thank you for your service, but please remember you're the people's representative to the county, not the county's representative to the people. So when you go back to the Board of Supervisors, please deliver this message from the people of Windsor. We have never appreciated county bureaucrats dictating local land use policy in Windsor. And when you talk about mitigation, let your colleagues know there is no amount of money that can mitigate the loss of self-determination that you propose for the citizens of our town. Windsor Town Council, thank you for your service, but please remember it is your job to represent the people of Windsor and to protect our general plan from federal and county intervention. I believe you're acting in good faith to negotiate with the tribe right now, and I support your efforts, but please, please tell the county and the federal government to give you your space. Friends and neighbors of Windsor, thank you for coming out here tonight, but remember you have a job to do too. It's your job to contact your representative to let them know you are opposed, we are opposed, the town of Windsor is opposed to HR 2538. Thank you.
My name is Mary Ann Beanbridge Kraus, and I'm a 20-year resident of Windsor. First of all, I'd like to thank the town of Windsor for the opportunity to finally let our voices be heard, and to Congressman Jared Huffman and Supervisor James Gore. Thank you Windsor and Sonoma County residents for coming out to this meeting tonight. So how is that brown lawn working out for you? Those dried up plants? That five-minute shower? Where you can be proud of yourselves Windsor residents, because from January through July of 2015, the citizens of Windsor have reduced their water use by 22% when compared to the same months of 2013. Congratulations. We are in the worst drought in California history. The state, county, and local officials have requested that we conserve water due to this drought. So why are they allowing a development to be built that will use 85.4 million gallons of water a year? Yes, you heard me right. Let's do the math. Residential housing, 63.2 million gallons of water a year. Hotel, 15 million gallons of water per year. Restaurants, 4.2 million gallons of water per year. Winery, 2.844 million gallons of water per year. Congressman Jared Huffman wants to allow through the passage of HR 2538, the additional use of 85.4 million gallons of water per year. And yet Congressman Huffman was quoted in a Press Democrat article on June 29th, 2015, and I'm quoting, "It's time for Congress to get serious and stop treating California's worst-ever drought as a political football." Unquote. This quote referred to Huffman's own drought relief bill. Well Congressman Huffman, how about starting right here in Windsor? We could conserve 85.4 million gallons of water a year if you withdraw HR 2538. Let's stop this political football game you are playing. Withdraw HR 2538. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Vivica Riedel, and I'm the CEO of PDI Surgery Center. It's a surgery center right off Shiloh Road, and since we opened our doors in January 2008, we've treated over 14,000 children. They are all on Medi-Cal. They're all low-income families. Half of them have been from Sonoma -- yeah, it keeps doing that. Half of those 14,000 children have been from Sonoma County, not all of them from Windsor. And I really want to thank Windsor for being a town that welcomed us. You have found a pathway where you didn't say, "We don't want to take care of those low-income children that are coming from 33 counties all over northern California." You welcomed us to open our doors. Yes, the parents of the kids do use the local businesses and use restaurants and hotels as needed. It's a huge need, and you were the home for that, and so I just want to thank you for that. And so I come to you as a neighbor, who I learned a lot today about the tribe, but I also want to say something I think will reflect on what the tribe is like. They haven't even told you yourselves, or told you themselves, but they donate money to PDI. It doesn't help me personally. It helps treat the children, because Medi-Cal doesn't pay enough to cover for the care. It actually doesn't, the kids, most of the kids who are Native American, they have sufficient coverage. So it covers children that, 14,000 children that is not within the tribe's, you know, mission or something they have to do. They're just doing it to help them be part of it. And I believe that to me shows that they are people that want to work with the community. They have worked with us to do the service. They've donated money, not for personal interest, not for any personal gain. They have not bought my vote. They have helped our team, our PDI staff, to do the work that's needed to do when there's just not enough money. So I believe that they will work with the community, and I think this is a community that welcomed us and can find ways that things can work. So I'm optimistic that you can find a solution to this. So thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gene Mendez, and I live in what we affectionately call Deer Creek North, as opposed to the Deer Creek on the south end of town. We, our community, is right up against the proposed development. I came here prepared with all sorts of notes, and I am really happy to learn so much more this evening. Congressmen, Supervisors, tribal leaders, and Town Council, thank you for your service here and for listening to us tonight. It's not easy for everybody to hear these things, but what I can say is, tonight I have learned that it's not a matter of whether this can be stopped, or opposed, or so on. From what I understand, this is going to happen one way or the other. I've never been, I'm an engineer. I'm not a person that really gets involved in a lot of the politics, push and pull. When I see a situation and I understand the problem, I start looking at, okay, how do we address it? My concerns are always going to focus on the infrastructures. The roadways in the surrounding areas are inadequate. There's also not enough room necessarily to expand the roadways without encroaching upon other people's properties in order to accommodate those widening. There is the issue of waters. I've heard nothing, you know, here I've been talking about well and joining city water. What about a reservoir? What about planning for when there is rainfall to capture that water? What's happening in looking at accommodating the influx of children in the school systems? There's also the issues of power. Will Sonoma Clean Power and PG&E be able to produce sufficient power without having to dramatically increase their infrastructure at a cost to us? These are many things that are being proposed there, such as winery, hotel, and spa. And I understand there's the 22-year threshold, I've heard in perpetuity, but right now what's on paper is 22 years. What happens after that? All these things I know are issues that can be solved and addressed. The one question that has been burning in my mind is, if these are people that are in, they're our neighbors, they live among us, then why do they have to be a nation apart? Are they not Americans too? Thank you.
Okay. All right. Right here.
My name is Tanny Cordis, and I live in Deer Creek. And this is my opinion. It might not necessarily be the opinion of my group or other people, but I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The flag is our national emblem, one that all citizens in all nationalities abide under. The pledge of allegiance to our flag is recited in Congress, on government meetings, local levels, and meetings held by private organizations, schools, Boy Scouts, and throughout the military. The flag and its allegiance promote a love for country and the principles on which it was founded. We cannot become one nation if individuals are separated by national sovereignty, a separate nation thereby living under separate laws. I believe it spreads anger, distrust, resentment, and future generations with entitlement issues. Now I understand that we may not all believe in the same God. We might not believe in God at all, but we do live under the same flag in a nation that is indivisible, which means undivided. If we are going to right the wrongs of the past, then we need to get beyond the past and move to a more cohesive and singularly governed society, where all have a say in what happens to their community. The pledge of allegiance has a purpose, and its purpose is to draw this nation together as people. I believe that all citizens of this nation should follow the same law. Although I do not agree with your sovereignty, I will respect it. And all I ask is that you respect our town and its general plan and boundaries. One of our great freedoms in this country is free speech, and I appreciate the opportunity for both sides to be able to say their piece without repercussion. One law for all. Please say no to HR 2538 and all future bills with the same purpose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, let me take this gentleman in the middle, and then I want to see if I can capture a couple of questions that relate to some of the things that have just been talked about.
Yes, I'm Phil Trobridge. I was born in Santa Rosa 82 years ago and live in Hillsburg. I've participated with Windsor quite a bit in the past. Our company did the project, the Vintage Green Subdivision, which is north of the golf course. I'd like to speak to the public benefit. In that project, we knew we didn't have that much public assistance, public support, and we looked around what we could do in the town, and we found that there were 95 soccer teams that didn't, that were of different ages, the teams were, who didn't have places to practice. They were making up places to practice. We picked up 10 acres, additional to the project, and developed for the city and donated it to the city, the 10-acre fully improved soccer park with lights. Yeah, I'm very proud of the project, very proud of the improvement, and I think that the city has benefited, the town has benefited from it. And so in the discussions and in the, as you go forward with the housing and the need for the sewer, the appropriate sewer services, the public benefit that is in, you know, in being here is really something that the city deserves and should look at very carefully. The business community over the years, over the last 20 years, we always come up with the idea, "How can we provide swimming?" Well, we can go down to the river. Well, nobody wanted to take that responsibility and liability on, and we didn't get a pool because of the cost. If this is a possibility, then work it into your agreement, and I really support that. Thank you.
Let me see if I can get a couple of these questions in. There's a lot of them, and then I'll get to the gentleman right over here. And the first one is for Congressman Huffman, and then I'll ask one to the Town Council or maybe staff or council to decide what to do with it. Actually, two quick ones, and then one quick one that I think is kind of a county-tribe question. I'm trying to combine a lot of this stuff as best I can. So the question to you Congressman is, a lot of the preamble of these questions tells us we're in the fourth year of the toughest drought we've been in. This project is going to use a substantial amount of water. You know, how can you reconcile those two things, A, and B, if there's a problem to the groundwater of, you know, existing residents in the existing town, you know, what can we do about it?
Right. Okay, so what I would say about this, a little bit tearing off what we discussed earlier, I would far prefer that this were going through all the rigor of a sequoque process, all the rigor of state laws that require that water supplies be identified in advance, the show-me-the-water laws, the mitigation requirements, the conservation and recycling commitments that would inevitably be part of that. We don't have that when you're talking about a fee to trust proposal. You just don't. It's not an option. And so the question here is, what can we do? I think we stand a better chance of getting those kind of safeguards in place. If we do something that we can control and protect, the only way you can do that is through a negotiated enforceable agreement, and when it comes to the federal enforcement, my bill. I've been asked to withdraw my bill by some of you here tonight. I would ask you really to think about whether you really want me to do that. The project's going forward anyway. It's going to get trust status, I would, I think most people would agree, very probably, but it would do so without federal enforceability, and it would probably do so with a BIA stamp of approval that doesn't include any of this stuff and doesn't prohibit a casino. So it's just not quite that simple. I would just leave one more point for you to consider. Back to Linda's point about where the water would best come from if we're trying to make the most sustainable choice from not-great choices, which is what we have here. I would say if you have an agreement negotiated with the city of Windsor for water and wastewater, I don't want to speak for the tribe or the city, but my guess is in that negotiation process, you could go a long way towards having best practices and the platinum standard of water use efficiency and reuse, and you could very significantly address the water footprint of this project, which I think is the best way to do it.
Okay. Let me do two quick ones to the town. I don't know if it's for staff or Town Council or both. I think these are easy ones, or at least I think they have quick answers, but I may be wrong. I'll ask them both. The first one is, how does this project comply with Windsor's general plan? And I think the answer, I think I know the answer, but let me hear it. And then, are you aware that according to the town's own research, the majority of Windsor residents oppose any development anywhere near the urban growth boundary? And I think we heard the answer to that, but there's two. Somebody, either a councilman wants to take that, or staff, or mayor, or I can make something up and you can say yes, or no.
Jeff, I could address some of that.
Okay.
My understanding of the project is, the project does not exist within the land that's part of the Windsor general plan. There is one part that was within the urban growth boundary, and the limitation on tribal housing there is 100% consistent with the Windsor-specific plan for that area. So this project exists, for the most part, within the unincorporated part of the county and does not conflict with the Windsor general plan.
I think he answered the question. Okay. All right. All right, so I'm, this gentleman here, and is that one working now, Rick?
Yes, yes.
Yes, excellent.
I'm Matt McDonald. I own a property in the Deer Creek subdivision, also own a vineyard and a winery. The vineyard is out on Eastside Road. When I moved into that property 27 years ago, in the Deer Creek subdivision, a big backyard, and you can hear voices carry over, my yard, and I paid $195,000 for that house, and I could hear my neighbor's conscience saying, "There goes the neighborhood." But let me just tell you folks, I've done them a favor, because now they're selling their houses for $6,000 more than they paid for them. Linda, I really appreciate your thought and the gentleman next to you. I think that I like your operation. We could all come up with disagreements on stuff, but thought that you offered a good plan. So when you just disagree with something and you don't have anything to substitute it for it, you might as well shut up. Councilwoman, I really understand where you're coming from, and I appreciate you being here and explaining that, because in my 20-some years here, I've just heard so much stuff about this, and there's no consistency to it. I believe in negotiating, and that's why I like what Linda said. She's a negotiator. So I think if we can all kind of keep the cool here and negotiate this, I think that you might increase your property $600,000, like I did. Thank you.
With this gentleman in the center. Yeah. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ed Turner. My wife Louise and I have been Windsor residents since 1987. We raised two kids here, Christopher and Leslie, and I'm really proud to call Windsor my home. When I moved to Windsor in 1987, the Press Democrat had just published an editorial calling Windsor "The Armpit of Sonoma County." I don't think any of us would call Windsor "The Armpit of Sonoma County" today, but that was a pretty damning statement on the town of Windsor, which wasn't a town at the time. In 1987, Railies was the only grocery store option. Safeway and the Safeway Shopping Center just did not exist. And soon residents are going to have a third option with an Oliver's, and I think that's a great option for us. Back in 1987, the Condiati houses on Brooks Road were all under construction. All the homes in Ellsbury Estates, Provence subdivision, Foothill Estates, and all the homes adjacent to Windsor Golf Course were all vacant lots. None of that existed. The concept of a town green, the concept of commercial development around a square with commercial merchants in combination with places to live wasn't even on the radar. As I watched Windsor blossom into the community that it is today, I realized that many, many of these that we enjoy today would not have ever happened if it was not a spirit of collaboration and partnership in our community. Another key step in the process was the incorporation of the town of Windsor back in 1992, which allowed us to form our own destiny and created the Town Council that we have here today. Some examples of other collaboration. Art Condiati built the subdivision on Brooks Road. He donated a school site that became the elementary, Brooks Elementary School. When William Lyon built the Foothill Estate subdivision, they donated a large parcel of land in conjunction with the Ellsbury Ranch that is now Foothill Regional Park. It's a beautiful amenity to the town. When Windsor needed a community center, all the service clubs in Windsor, along with numerous volunteers, rolled up their sleeves and volunteered their time and grabbed a shovel or swing a hammer to build a community center located behind the Safeway Shopping Center. And as the town grew, so did the need for good quality schools to educate the children of Windsor. And it was clear that Windsor needed to pass a school bond to build those schools. Windsor residents responded and passed a school bond measure. The success of those school bond measures is now the Windsor High School, which is an award-winning school that's been recognized nationally for delivering high-quality education, along with Brooks Middle School. There are many other examples of this collaboration. The Windsor Golf Course, Pat Ellsbury Skateboard Park, the Windsor Boys and Girls Club, and the soccer fields on Mitchell Lane that were mentioned previously. Litten's proposal to the town of Windsor is another example of collaboration. Litten seeks to build a high-quality residential project in Windsor so that Litten's tribal members can finally establish their homeland. Outsiders have raised concern that Litten's plan is really a disguise for a casino operation. I believe those concerns are without merit. To be a good neighbor, Litten has voluntarily agreed to pay development impact fees at both the county and local level to support the local community. Included in those fees is a sizable fee to help mitigate Litten's student enrollment impact on the Windsor Unified School District. In addition, Litten has agreed --
About done?
Yeah, just about done. Fund the entire cost of design and construction of a state-of-the-art aquatic complex, quite a nice contribution to the town. I have a fundamental belief that I trust my elected officials to make the right choice for the citizens of Windsor. Some of the people in this room actually got to vote for the Town Council that's here and have the opportunity to cast votes. Those votes cast represent a vote of confidence from all the Windsor residents that you act in good faith and put our best interests forth. Tonight's discussion is a test of that leadership, and I thank you all for your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. This gentleman here, and I'll point out that our little colorful robot here actually says "begin" when it means "end." So when it says "begin," I think it means "begin to end," is what I believe that.
Well, I couldn't concur more about the need for civility and collaboration, but I also think sometimes a little dose of cynicism --
I want you to get right into the microphone if you can.
A little dose of healthy cynicism sometimes, I think, is in order as well. And so I must confess that I'm a little bit bemused by the fact that we, everybody says this is a done deal, it's a done deal, it's a done deal, but I wonder, what's circulating around the halls of Washington DC? Has anybody gone there to perhaps forward our point of view that maybe this isn't a done deal or should not be a done deal? We also heard, I believe, I'm paraphrasing the attorney that's representing the developer, that if this particular HR bill does not pass, you're not going to really like what you're going to get if it doesn't, which also inspires me to be a little bit cynical. I'm all for having neighbors. That's not the point. I'm all for allowing people to develop property to its highest and best utility, but I am really concerned that some folks just get a pass on how lands are developed, especially lands that are designated as rural properties and urban growth boundaries. But I must confess, I'm really most cynical about that map back there, and I wish all of you would file by it on your way out. It appears that this developer has acquired properties that approximate a substantial portion of land that almost equates to about a third the size of the town of Windsor, and I'm not sure where it stops. So my other little tiny bit of cynicism is, what's untapped for that? What was the purpose of acquiring those additional 800, 900 acres? And is there a plan to buy more land? And if so, what's the intended purpose for that? I mean, I don't think any of us know. And to me, without clear definition of what's the giant game plan, and what are the guarantees that we can all rest assured will be in place about the use of that land and perhaps other lands that are acquired in the future? So again, I totally, truly believe that cynicism, yeah, collaboration is needed, but I think somehow we've got to hold somebody's feet to the fire and say, "What's going on here? What was the point of acquiring this massive amount of real estate?" So I would like to know, not in this venue, but at some point in time, what's your overall game plan, and how do we rest assured, again, that we know with certainty what's going to happen there? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's, how about if, let's have this woman, once you go next, it's kind of like the draft, and you've got to two at this end, and then I'll get to you, and then I'm going to try to get a couple more questions in.
My name is Teresa Park, and I'm a Windsor, I've been a Windsor resident for 22 years, and I believe that this proposed development is in complete contradiction of how the citizens of Windsor and Sonoma County wish to see the rural land and the protection of our urban growth boundaries. Any and all groups or individuals who acquire property in these areas should be subject to the exact same rules and regulations as other citizens in terms of development. As an aside, how are local merchants going to compete with the proposed shops and other venues owned by the developer, when they will be able to discount prices due to the fact that they are not subject to the same taxes? As we all know, taxes pay for services like our roads, schools, parks, and emergency services. I am completely opposed to this project due to its scope, size, and the uncertain future disposition of the other parcels currently owned by the developer. Congressman Huffman, we ask that you revisit the propriety of HR 2538 and to withdraw the same, and to the council, I request that you go on record opposing this project. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to, hang on one second, I'm going to ask one question, because I know that, I think the chairman has to, you have to leave, and this is a question that relates exactly to a couple of the points that were just made. And again, I'm going to try to piece together two or three of these that I'm looking at, but I think I know the answer to the first part, but let's just confirm it. If a resort or shopping center, winery, commercial projects are built at some point, is it correct that no taxes are paid to the county or to the town?
Well, there wouldn't be any, there wouldn't be anything paid to the town.
Go into the, well, there's a follow-up here about maintenance and services. Let me ask the whole thing. So then, so then the second part of that is, so then who pays for sheriff schools, fire, road, et cetera, maintenance, which I think, you know, which I think is where your head is.
Yeah, I can answer that. In the agreement, that's why we're paying the in-luke payments for the property taxes. That covers what you pay. That's the same formula that's paid there. And we also have a, in the agreement for the resort, if there was a hotel or anything like that, we pay the same tax rate as anybody else.
Okay. And will these new shops, businesses, hotels, et cetera, take away from the businesses downtown, the town green, the towns' businesses, in terms of business?
Well, once again, when we talked about the resort and winery, we talked about a right to pursue. We don't have any plans. We don't have any designs. We don't have any listings of types of shops. Generally -- Generally speaking, there's not a sales and use tax that's paid to the county, but what we do in a situation like that is we have a tribal sales and use taxes, the equivalent of that, so that there's not unfair competition.
All right. The gentleman right here.
Thank you. Warren Parker, live on Leafhaven Lane, been in Sonoma County twenty-three years and Windsor twenty-two years. Former member of the town council and have had the privilege of serving you. We have a tradition in our town of communicating our thoughts and feelings and we have come together in opposition and in for many different issues. Remember when Walmart came to town? The threats were all the small businesses would disappear, it would be a horrible impact on our town. Opposition was led by someone who used to be our former mayor, long before she was mayor. The fact was, all that hype proved out to be not true. Businesses are still here. Walmart is a business that has provided valuable tax benefits to our town that enabled us to do things. Now, some people don't like corporations. I understand that, but you know what? We either work for somebody or we're in business ourselves. A slide was on the screen that kind of made slight of the money that the casino had made, the tribe had made at the casino. Since when is it wrong to make money? When is it wrong? Maybe the method we don't agree with, but the fact is, that tribe provides employment opportunities for the citizens of that county. I hope we can work together. I hope we can build bridges. I believe that it is going to pass and I would rather have Senator Huffman's bill pass than have it go the other route because then you will have reasons to cry. And the other thing I'm concerned about is the underlying tone of racial discrimination.
Hold it, hold it. Eh, 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 eh. Folks, timeout. Folks.
Shame on you.
Look in the mirror.
Shame on you.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, please, just let him finish. We'll go on to the next comment.
Fears have been expressed about the neighbors and the neighborhood. I've heard it. I've read it on the internet, in Facebook postings by people who've posted about this. So I'm just concerned. I don't want... That's not our town. That's not what we've worked hard to build. I didn't accuse. I said I was concerned. Okay? It wasn't an accusation. So let's... I'm entitled to an opinion and I appreciate the fact that everybody's taken time to come here and participate, even those that I may not necessarily agree with. Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. Okay. This gentleman here, in the center. Thank you.
My name is Warren Watkins. My wife and I live in Hillsburg and I'm here representing a group called Hillsburg Citizens for Sustainable Solutions, HCSS. I'm a native Californian and I'm confident that Congressman Huffman is going to understand what I say here briefly because I have to go to the bathroom, but I'm not convinced that the county does understand. So I think it's about more than the tribe or the reservation.